This conference will now be recorded.
Hate it when that happens. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the February 23rd Tenino City Council work session. I believe all council members are present. It's nice to see your faces. And tonight, we're going to start with a presentation from Thurston County Communications, TCOM, Capcom, whatever we want to call it. So we have Mr. Keith Fluehling, who is the Director of Capcom, who I will give the stage to. Mr. Fluehling?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Appreciate your time this evening. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, sir.
And am I sharing my screen, or are you going to take us through the slides?
Oh, let me add you as presenter one second.
Whichever is more convenient. Okay, so how do I, let's just do this. Sorry, I'm not very familiar with this platform. So give me just a second. How do I? How do I move these boxes around? Let's see here. There we go. There we go. Get that out of the way. Okay, I'm sorry. What we're, what I'd like to do this evening is talk to you about the intergovernmental agreement that is in place between Tenino and Thurston 911 Communications. This intergovernmental agreement has been in place for many years. And it has now gone through a recommendation cycle here based on something that happened back in 2018. But you should know that this IGA was last refreshed in 2010. And that's when TCOM became an independent agency from the county, used to be a county department. And in 2010, it went from being Capcom to becoming TCOM 911, an independent agency. And then in 2018, the Administration Board was contemplating replacing the public safety radio system. And in order to do that, there was some effort being made to see about borrowing money. And in order to borrow money, the bonding agents told us that there was a provision in our IGA that that was not very clear about our ability to borrow money. And that provision was in Article 3.4.6. And it said, among other things, it went on to say unless and until TCOM 911 has such power under applicable law, which really meant, which really pertained to the ability to borrow money. So the bonding agent said, you should really look at revising your bylaws, I mean, your IGA, so that you can, there is no doubt of your ability to borrow money. Now subsequently, of course, you all know that we were able to pass a sales use tax in the county that increased our 1/10th to 2/10ths. We were using, we use that additional revenue as leverage against the private financing. But even that private financing, they indicated that it would be much cleaner for the agency if we would change this. So that's what started this revision cycle. And then, so the Administration Board put together a working group based, some members of the Administration Board and some members of the Operations Board, and they went to work on revising the, or making recommendations to revise the IGA. Now, in order to revise the IGA, it's clear in the articles that any member agency can offer up amendments to the IGA. And in this case, this working group put forward some recommendations. Most of the changes you're going to see in the document were recommended by the working group. There are some that were recommended by the Administration Board of Directors based on the change in the sales use tax. And all of these recommendations were and have been approved by the Administration Board of Directors, as well as a group of city attorneys and the county attorney took a look at it and offered some suggestions as well. So they're all here in this recommendation package that you're going to see. The important thing here, though, is in Article 12, although any member can offer up amendments, it takes all members to agree before those amendments become part of the IGA. So that's what we're doing. We're taking these recommendations around to all of our member agencies and cities and asking you to consider these recommendations and approve them so that we can incorporate these changes in our IGA. What I'd like to do now is just give you an overview, a high level view of all of the changes that have been made in the, all of the recommended changes that have been made in the IGA. And I'm just going to go through this rather quickly. I do have a red line version available. I think that's been distributed to you all previous to this meeting. So if you have any questions along the way, please just shout out, get my attention, and we will address them as we go. So first, Article 1 revised the language on the sales use tax. And what we had to do was change it from, it was very specifically identified as 1/10th of 1%. And of course, now that we passed the additional 1/10th, we needed to change that. So we changed the language from a specific amount to actually reflect total receipts from the emergency communications sales use tax, so that the county would pass those revenues along to TCOM for the replacement of the radio system and operating expenses and other capital. Article 2, we did some work on definitions, revised and clarified communication services. We added emergency communications systems and facilities, which is the exact language that's included in the emergency sales use RCW, so we needed to add that. Member agency was revised and clarified, member assessments definition was revised and reflected the new sales use tax change, non-member agencies were revised and clarified, and public interlocal operation was added. In Article 3, this is where we did the work on the language about the ability to borrow money. So in 3.6 point, I mean, in 3.4.6, we removed that language through one or more of the member agencies, unless and until TCOM 911 has such power under applicable law. That language was removed. That should clarify that issue. And then in 3.4.7, minor language changes. Most of these minor language changes had to do with the allocation formula, which you will see later in the presentation, was removed from the document. So, and I'll explain that later. Article number 4, system and provision of communication services. Sorry, got sliding on, keep the hands away from the mouse, we'll be fine. We made some minor changes in 4.2, to clarify the language, 4.3 revised language again. 4.4 was, we had to add some language. And the reason we had to add language is this, this particular section addressed the ability, or actually preserved the rights of individual member agencies to own and operate their own equipment. And what it did not do is it did not allow TCOM the ability to purchase equipment for our member agencies. And as you all probably know by now, in the replacement of the radio system, TCOM is also purchasing all of the subscriber equipment. So all of the mobile radios, all of the portable radios for all of the agencies that are members of TCOM are being purchased by TCOM. Well, in order to do that and have the ability through our IGA, we had to change the language in 4.4 to allow that to happen. And then 4.6, this was the one place in the IGA that spoke to the TCOM lease at the building that we occupy, the lease that we currently have with the county. Subsequent to the last revisions in the IGA, TCOM executed a separate standalone lease with the county with all the terms and conditions that go with it. So 4.6 was no longer necessary. In Article 5, made some minor language changes for clarification. Article 6, same. Article 7, there were no changes. And then in Article 8, we made some substantive changes. And Article 8 was, is the addition of new members. And when the board took a look at this article, they were struggling with some of the ambiguity or not as well structured as they wanted it to be. And this particular issue came up when an agency wanted to join as a member agency in the past several years, and the board went, looked at Article 8 and found that it needed to be cleaned up some. And one of the things that they wanted to add was this language that in the application to become a member agency, that applicant had to show the ability to contribute future revenue from a dedicated funding source for maintenance operations and replacement purposes. So that language was added in Article 8. In Article 9, there were no changes. In Article 10, there were minor changes again for clarification.
So like an example of like an added member agency would be like the Nisqually Tribe? Is that kind of?
That's exactly correct, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Yeah. In fact, that was the example. They did come to us a while back. They wanted to know how they could become a member agency. And the board, they never actually applied formally, so we did not have to address it. But during that process, the board looked at this article and found that it needed to be bolstered a bit.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Article 11, this previously addressed the allocation formula for member fees. And as you know, back in 2002, when the first 1/10th of 1% was passed, shortly thereafter, the board eliminated user agency fees and have never reinstituted them, although we carried the language from 2002 forward, and it has always been in Article 11 until now. The board is recommending that we eliminate the allocation formula language because, one, they don't see that it'll ever be necessary, particularly with the additional 1/10th of 1% emergency communications sales use tax. And second, the formula was so outdated, it was not very useful at all. So instead, they deleted the member assessments paragraph, revised it, and put it in 11.2, so that if any member or group of members wants a specific service or equipment, there's a provision to do member assessments, but the allocation formula has been removed. And then 11.1 revised the sales use language to reflect the total revenue amount. So Article 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17 have no changes. There was a Schedule 1 that outlined the initial funding formula, and that has been removed from the document. So those are, that's the high level view of the changes that we're offering up, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions or comments. And I'd like to know how to stop sharing my screen.
I think Jen helped you out with that.
Commissioner, what I'm seeing here is basically just housekeeping.
A lot of housekeeping, correct?
Thank you.
Sir? Can you, can you give a, you know, we've got, we've got council members that have various experience with what TCOM is. Can you give a, an introduction and overview, you know, an elevator pitch on what exactly it is you guys do, where your funding comes from, maybe some history, you know, some background?
Okay. Yeah, no, no problem. And I'm sorry, I should have done that at the beginning. TCOM 911 is an independent agency. We're responsible for three things in the county. So we answer all of the 911 emergency calls that emanate from the county. We process them all, and then we dispatch for all public safety agencies. So every law enforcement agency, every fire and EMS agency within the county, with the exception of Washington State Patrol, they have their own communication center. The third thing we do is we own and manage the emergency, the public safety radio system. This is the communication system that field units use to talk to each other, as well as to talk to dispatch. So those are our three-pronged mission. That's what we deliver. We are established by an interlocal agreement that I just went over with you all. And we are also organized as a 501(c)(3) charitable foundation through the IRS code. We get about 76% of our funding from the sales use tax. And that sales use tax is permitted by the state legislature at 2/10ths of 1% for emergency communications revenue, right? So everything to do with emergency communications and nothing else. That's all it's designated for. We originally got 1/10th in 2002, and then in 2019, we went back to the legislature, asked them to raise it to 2/10ths, which they did. And then we went to the voters in the fall of 2019 and got the voters to approve that increase for Thurston County. And that's the revenue that we're going to use to replace the entire public safety radio system. With that, any questions? That's kind of the thumbnail.
Can you speak to your governments? So you're not, you know, you collect tax money, but you're not a government agency, but you have an oversight board, you have some, you know, who decides how your money's spent, how your policies are developed, and you know, what kind of accountability is built in?
Sure. So like I said, we are 501(c)(3), so we have an Administration Board of Directors. They are the ultimate authority for the agency. They're responsible for hiring and firing the executive director. They also do performance appraisals. They're responsible for the budget and policy decisions. So that's their structure. They are eight members, and they are all elected officials. So we have representatives from, you know, the county commissioners, mayors or council people from each of the large cities. We have a representative from the Fire Commissioners Association. And we have other fire commissioners from the large fire districts, as well as a representative for small cities and towns. And so those are eight members. They also have a board, an operations board that reports to them. The operations board has 10 members, and each of those 10 members are the chief executive officers of their organization. So this would be police chiefs, fire chiefs, and medic one director. And these are non-elected officials, but their, their responsibility for the organization is to oversee and provide advice and guidance on day-to-day operations for TCOM.
Thank you. And so I think you, I think you do an excellent job. I love TCOM. But I do, I do just want to say that from Tenino, our only gripe has ever been that the, on the, on the admin, on the admin board, it is, there are representatives from the Olympia, Lacey, Tumwater, and Yelm. And there, and, and it is, we, you know, we get lumped in as South County with, and then like just de facto, Yelm seems to always be the representative for South County. And we have, we have said that we don't feel that that works anymore, that Yelm has grown to be a, you know, a city in and of itself that should not be considered a small city anymore. And we've asked that, you know, maybe there could be, give some, given some consideration that the small cities be just the small three, and we could come up with a representative to rotate between the three of us. I would still love to see that. And then on the ops board, I don't believe our chief is, is ever sat at the table for the ops board either. And so like those, you know, while I'm in full support of passing the IGA, and I think TCOM does an excellent job, I still would, I would be, I think I would be not doing my job if I didn't mention those two gripes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and we do know that. And, and that is something that, as we've explained before, something that's, that's something that would have to come from you to our administration board. And, and that's not happened that I know of in recent history, anyway. I think it had occurred once. The other thing I would tell you about that is that representative from Yelm is supposed to be a representative for all the small cities. And how Yelm becomes, how the member from Yelm is, is picked, I don't know. I don't know the history of that.
It used to rotate, and then it just kind of got stuck in Yelm for like the last 12 years. And, you know, I think Yelm, Yelm should have a representative, because Yelm, you know, they're, they're a good sized city now. You know, and I don't know. And so I, yeah, I, I, you know, perhaps the, the three mayors down here could, you know, you know, when, you know, it could, maybe it just needs to come from us as a group. But, you know, I, I feel like we keep bringing it up, and I don't know, I guess it's on, I guess it's totally on us to like, fight that.
Yeah, I think that's exactly what we should do. Get the three mayors together and, and, and go to the administration board and link our application that we want to be part of TCOM.
I would agree with that. I think, I think that's a great idea.
But, you know, knowing that, and, and us having brought it up in the past, you know, what kind of consideration has been given to that, you know, you know, in this, you know, if we've got a new IGA, that was kind of the discussion was like, you know, I brought it up, we've, we've, you know, we've kicked that, we've kicked that around to have our, allow our chief on the ops board and have a South County representative that was a small city representative on the admin board. And, and it was, okay, well, bring it up, let us know about it, it'll be, you know, we're working on the IGA. You know, I mean, is it something that just like fell through the cracks? Or is it something that there's no interest or no taste for, or is it just, you know, no, it is what it is?
Or is it something that the squeaky wheel gets the oil?
No, I don't think it's any of that. And so when, when we've come and presented previously, and we, I think we're out there two years ago and talked with you all, and we had this discussion at that time. My encouragement to you was to get your request together in a written format and send it to the board and get on their agenda for formal consideration. And as far as I know, that, that hasn't occurred. And I would encourage you to do that. That, that's really your step forward. Now, I will tell you this, Mr. Mayor. Every time we've had this discussion, I've brought it back to the board and informed them. This is what Tenino is telling us. And so they know, they know your concerns.
What kind of feedback have you, have you gotten from that? Is there, I mean, is it?
Well, I don't, they don't, they're, they're not going to discuss that with me until we get some formal business in front of them, an agenda item, you know, it's, it's like, you know, okay, we'll wait for the request and then we'll deliberate. So.
Keith, can I ask a quick question?
Absolutely. Go ahead.
It's my understanding that that position used to rotate to different agencies every year, perhaps? Any idea why that stopped happening? And is that, is that something that maybe we could look into as an alternative? Is to get that rotation schedule back?
Yeah, and you know, I would encourage you to look at that, too. The IGA does not specify how that representative is selected.
I had looked for that, and I couldn't find anything that addressed that.
It's not in there, and it's not in the bylaws either. And so, you know, that could be an avenue for Tenino to pursue.
Thank you.
Actually, Keith, doing it that way does not actually fix the issue that we're looking at. The problem is, is that Yelm, as the mayor said, has gotten to a point where they're large enough on their own. But using the same formula that it used to be, and the last time Tenino sat on that board is when I sat on that board. What happens is you're lumping all of South County as one vote. Whereas, whereas North County has three votes, not counting the county commissioner, so that's four, four to one. We've got four jurisdictions down here with one vote, four jurisdictions in North County with four votes. That's always been the real issue, is that we're not seeing anything. If we just switch the representative from Yelm to Tenino, we still only have one vote. If Yelm retains its own, its own jurisdiction, and then Tenino goes in with the other two jurisdictions, at least now, South County would have two votes instead of just one. When you look at the demographics of Thurston County, a little bit more than half of the population does reside in South County. That means South County is not getting a whole lot of representation on that board. How do I know? Again, I've been on that board, and I've watched the demographics, and the demographics are pretty constant, about 52 to 55% at any given time is living in South Thurston County. And yet, we only have one vote. That's where the issue is.
Yeah, I appreciate those comments, and I'm not here to tell you how Tenino should proceed. But I think there's avenues, and, and if the, if these are your concerns, let's get them in front of the board for consideration.
Okay. All right. That, is there any last questions for Director Fluehling before we conclude the work session?
Thanks a lot, Keith. See you in a few days.
Yep, you're on the agenda. You're on the agenda under new business, and, you know, we're recommending that we, we, you know, we pass the IGA. And then we will follow up and we'll continue this discussion. So I appreciate your presentation. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Good night.
Good night, sir. All right, that is the end of the work session, and we're going to have a 15-second recess that is now over. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the February 23rd, 2021, Tenino City Council. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one Tenino City Council, uh, meeting. Let the record show that all council members are present and accounted for. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. We need an, we have an agenda needing approval uh, with the addition of their new business, item twelve, uh, music festival, and item thirteen, inter-local, or I, intergovernmental agreement with Capcom.
No approval.
Okay.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as stated. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. That brings us to approval of minutes for the February ninth, two thousand twenty-one meeting.
They're moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the minutes as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. That brings us to the consent calendar. This includes uh, resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero one, Park Foundation Caboose Donation Acceptance, Tenino Farmers Market, Evergreen Bicycle Club Event Approval. Uh, and the consent calendar consisting of February tenth, two thousand twenty-one, through February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one, uh, which includes payroll EFTs and checks to number two nine seven zero eight in the amount of twenty-four thousand five hundred ninety-three dollars and four cents. Claims checks numbers two nine seven zero nine through two nine seven three one, and EFTs in the amount of twenty-one thousand four hundred twenty-one dollars and two cents for a grand total of forty-six thousand fourteen dollars and six cents with no cannabis or liquor license renewals.
Oh, no problem.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar as stated. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. We have no executive session, we have no presentations. Uh, we have a public comment period. If there is anyone in the public that is present at the meeting that would like to provide comment, you'll be given three minutes. State your name and address. Please, uh, open your mic. If you'd like to provide public comment, you'll be given three minutes. I am seeing no activity going once, going twice. Moving along. I have a question from the staff. Uh, typically when we when we approve the farmers market and the bicycle club, uh, we would have a resolution that also uh, waived their fees. There's a few organizations that we waive the fees for every year, and those were two of them. Uh, so at some point in new business, I would like to entertain a motion to amend the agenda to include a new item of business uh, that would consider waiving the fees, the event fees for Tenino Farmers Market and the Evergreen vice, and Evergreen Bicycle Club.
Mr. Mayor, before we add that to the agenda, didn't we a few years ago make this an administration type of a, a, a thing? Instead of having to come to council year in and year out, because it's always the same request with the same, uh, uh, requirement, so that we didn't have to do this.
I think what we did was we pass, we would pass a resolution that would identify like four or five of them, uh, every year. And, I don't that's why they're on here. Yes, we did. Uh, R- Rhonda, if you, if, if you want to chime in, just chime in, because if you've got some information that I'm not recalling, but my recollection was that we passed a resolution every year that waived for like five of them that always come, and we just called it one thing.
Yes, it was like Race for Rowan, Adam Craig Foundation Festival, the Farmers Market, this bike race, um, but.
But what is different now is we're not exactly sure which ones still are going to be coming before us. And so we're, we've got these ones that have requested, and we're wanting to do those and, and waive the fees like we always have, because they're the, the regular events. Uh, we're not sure about the, the, uh, the Renaissance Fair. Oregon Trail Days is having a meeting coming up next week. Uh, we haven't heard, heard from Race for Rowan. And then, uh, the, the Four Score Mile Music Festival is, there's no planning for that, but we have a presentation uh, later in the meeting from Mr. Restic, who has formed a new nonprofit, who wants to talk about having a music festival. But that, you know, that's, that's different considerations than, uh, the Farmers Market, which we saw last year. We know that even if there's, you know, COVID twenty-three breaks out, they have safety measures put in place, and we don't have to counsel them. The music festival, we haven't, we haven't, you know, we haven't broke that bubble yet. So there's, there's, so there's more talk. So that's why we've kind of broken them out. Does that make sense, Councilmember O'Callaghan?
Well, eh, not really, because they're all still the same things. We're not sure if they're going to be moving forward or not this year. The only one that's different is the music festival. That one should come back to council this way, that at least we get an introduction, we find out exactly who they are and all of that stuff. But the rest of this should all just be housekeeping as those applications come up. Uh, and as long as there's no real changes or major changes, then, uh, the office itself should be able to just rubber stamp it. That's what we, that's what we did.
I don't think we created some kind of enter administrative mechanism that would allow al- allow the, you know, the administration to just just rubber stamp. I don't think we did that. I think we did that in a resolution that grabbed all of them, and we're not doing that this year because we're going back to individual consideration. Uh, what I attempted to do was put them all on the consent calendar, but what, what I failed to do was specify that we wanted the fees waived. It should, I, I should have had it saying the consent calendar that we, uh, we're allowing, we're accepting the, the event notices and waiving the fees. I didn't say that. So that's, that was my bad. So as far as housekeeping goes, I'm asking that you guys amend the agenda and add in there that you want to waive the fees for the Farmers Market, because I, I accidentally didn't do that in the consent calendar.
So are we in the point right now that we can make that motion right now?
You, it's your meeting, you guys can make a motion whenever you want. I have a motion to amend the agenda to add, uh, thirteen, I, twelve, item fourteen, uh, waive fees for Tenino Farmers Market and Evergreen Bicycle Club. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Sorry, it, it, it is, it is housekeeping, but it was, it was our bad. Uh, we have no proclamations, we have no old business, new business. Uh, discussion regarding budget and clerk treasurer position. Uh, so we are, we are attempting to, uh, fill the clerk treasurer position permanently. We have had some applications. Uh, I, I do believe that we need to rethink the, the pay structure for the position. It is, it's a, it's a position with a lot of responsibilities that requires some very special skills in uh, multiple different, uh, areas and disciplines. And the, the way, where the pay is set, uh, it makes it, I believe, very difficult for us to, uh, find a person. And what, and I have looked over the budget, and it is tight, and it is going to be difficult, and I can't just come to you guys and say I would like to add such, you know, so much money, you know, extra this, extra that to the position, uh, because I can't say exactly where it's going to come from. Uh, we, we start out the year in two thousand twenty-one with a beginning balance of almost thirty thousand dollars. That's tight. We end the year with an ending balance of like thirteen thousand dollars. That's tight. So what I am asking is that the council, uh, make a motion to, uh, move, to move this to the finance committee, and I can meet with the finance committee. We don't really need a motion to do this, but I want to involve everybody, and I want to know, I want everybody to know the motions that we're going through and the steps that we're taking. But I'm, I'm asking that you, you move this discussion to the finance committee, and the mayor meets with the finance committee to look over the budget, and we probably have to hash out some kind of, uh, amendment to the budget that would, uh, do some shifting around and find some additional funds possibly, and come back with a recommendation to the council.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
The hard part that I see with this is maintaining whatever level we, we move it to. Uh, we, we should be getting some money from the feds because of the, of, uh, COVID, but that's just one-time funds. So we have to be real careful with the monies that we do have.
Yeah, and we, you know, I don't want to speculate too much. We, we can, we can expect sales taxes to, to improve. We took a hit there. Uh, you know, we've, we've got developers that are looking a lot of things around Tenino. We can expect our property taxes to, our, our property tax revenue to increase. That doesn't mean we're going to tax people more. That means we will receive more tax revenue because there'll be more people paying. So we can speculate a little bit, but I don't want to do that on my own. I don't want to do that without a lot of deliberation and consideration and involvement with council and the finance committee. So uh, we don't need a motion, but I'm going to ask, and I've already talked to Linda about it, that as the committee chair for the finance committee, that we, we set something up very soon. So is everybody on board with that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes.
Uh, Historic Commission, the historic, so, uh, the Thurston County Historic Commission, they do a, a, a grant for historic projects every year. They don't typically, uh, grant funds to the same project year over year. And, and, you know, we'll get creative if we end up, uh, asking for more money for the caboose project next year. We can get creative in how we ask. We could, you know, we could, we can make it work, but uh, when we filled out the grant application, we, we did it for the caboose again, and we asked that they grant the money to the same project. They don't always do that. That's not a typical request. So they had to, they had to, you know, consider it administratively, and they, they approved it, and they awarded five thousand dollars to the, uh, the caboose project again. Uh, so we're very happy with that. We're happy with that decision, but because it is money coming in, we need, uh, council approval to accept uh, the five thousand dollar grant from the caboose restoration project.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the administration to accept the five thousand dollars from the Thurston County Historic Grant program for caboose restoration project. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Uh, this is other, this is more good news. Uh, Port of Olympia, which does its Small City Economic Development Grant every year. Uh, they had been talking about discontinuing the grant because they, they had lost revenue in the, in the pandemic and recession and whatnot. Uh, we received notice from them today that they are going to continue funding that program this year. And there's an expedited, uh, application process. We are asking that the city authorize the administration to, uh, to, uh, fill out a grant application with the, I, with the concept of, uh, receiving the money for use for the parking lot project behind the mini mall.
All moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to authorize the administration to begin the two thousand twenty-one application process for the Port of Olympia Small City Economic Development Fund, uh, with the money to go towards the parking lot improvement plan or program behind the mini mall. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, just wanted to real briefly touch on the, the education part of this. Uh, one of the things that may sound a little bit silly is that you have to ask us if you can go out and get those grants. Uh, that's not something that we've done on our own. That's something that's been handed down to us by the state. This way, everybody knows what we're doing at all times. That's all I wanted to add to this.
A- absolutely. We.
That's good, John.
Yeah, you know, we're, we want the council's approval, we want the council to be on board, we want the council to know if there's money coming in, if, and, you know, sometimes the timeframes are quick, but, uh, and, and there may be a scenario where we see something and we have to jump on it, and we're going to apply for it, and we're going to say, if we get awarded it, we would, we would, you know, we would later on kind of retroactively do something, but uh, what I don't want is for the council to think that we're not asking them and talking with them about where we want to allocate money. So if the, if I, you know, I, I wouldn't want to get in a situation where uh, it is accused that that, that parking lot project is some kind of pet project of the mayor's, and he didn't go to the council and, and deliberate with them on where that money was going to go. And maybe three council members really had a different idea of what was appropriate and best for the city. And, uh, so it, it is, you know, you have every right to say, you know, Councilmember Copeland could step up and say, well, you know, we've already put twenty thousand into that. I think that ten thousand is needed for something else, and then we would talk about that. So, you know, it's important that we have these open public meetings. It's important that we remain transparent about how we come to conclusions or how we decide, uh, you know, what the vision is and where, you know, where things are going, and then you know, it can be hotly, hotly debated on Facebook later, and you guys can engage with your constituents on that. So thank you, Councilmember O'Callaghan.
So wait, so with that, is that just going towards just the paving? Because I know there was talk in the past, too, that we mentioned about putting charging stations there also.
I, I would like to remain as general as possible, because right now the hurdle we're trying to get over is simply the planning and engineering. Uh, when the, the city planner had a presentation with the, uh, with the, the Chamber of Commerce and the Planning Commission, he, he came in and said, hey, you know, you guys may have, I, I don't know what the total project budget is now, but it's somewhere around fifty, sixty thousand dollars, right, Linda?
We got a bid for, we got a bid for sixty-eight thousand dollars so far, and that includes the drainage and the paving.
And so our planner said, hey, you know, there's an additional twenty, twenty-seven thousand that you guys aren't considering that needs to cover, uh, like storm water management, planning, and, you know, all these other things. So it's, it's, that's how government works and.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I'm fine with just keeping it general as it is.
Okay, thank you.
Call for the question, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Uh, this brings us to agreement by LG Nelson for providing planning, check and building inspection services. So we talked about this, uh, over the last couple of meetings. Mr. Bennett Barnes is retiring, uh, and we've been going over different options on how to make sure we're continuing to provide planning services uh, to people that want to develop in our community. Uh, this is going to be a, a bit of a departure from what we're used to, and that it's not going to be an in-house person, which would be, I think, most of ours, most of our preference. Uh, but this is a way to quickly transition and maintain continuity. Uh, we, we fully intend on using these services, but we also want to keep talking about uh, hiring that additional public works person to serve as a permit technician, which would, you know, kind of bring back some of the lower-level permitting uh, processes in, back in-house, and, you know, help us retain some of those fees and help us, uh, maintain some efficiency, because this person, you know, this, this contracted agency, they're not going to be there every day. And they're not going to be as responsive as Ben. They're going to have to set up like maybe once a week when they do some of these things. Uh, they're also being hired by Bucota and Rainier, so that will, that will help with some of the efficiencies and some of the continuity. Uh, but this will quickly get us into a contract, and this is a month-by-month contract. Uh, but this will quickly get us into a contract and this is a month by month contract. Uh, and and it doesn't require us to do anything. But it allows us to uh, keep going. We have a couple of things in the works uh, that uh, Ben isn't able to wade into because he wouldn't be able to like see them through. So there's that, the additional gas station that's being proposed where Scotty B's is. Uh, there's a dentist office right across the street there from there that is being proposed. And and those are, those are essentially on our desk, uh, needing, needing some planning services. So we are asking that you move to authorize the mayor to enter into the agreement with LG Nelson to replace our current inspector, Ben Barnes, as the Plan Check and Building Inspection Official.
I'm moved.
Second.
Second.
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to authorize the mayor to enter into the planning services with uh, it is the name of the business. LG Nelson would be the individual. The name of the business was, where did it go, Jen? Was like Pacific?
Pacific something.
Yeah. Let's see.
Pacific Testing and Inspection Inc.
There we go. Uh, they're located out of Chehalis, so they are local. And uh, they they come highly recommended from from Ben Barnes. Is there any discussion? Go ahead.
Wayne, what was the, the gas station Scotty B's thing again? Can you repeat that?
Uh, the, the owners of the property there that own, you know, the building that uh, well, that whole parking lot and all those buildings, they are wanting to build a card lock gas station. So it would be one of those gas pumps that are unmanned that you go and you slide your card into and you pump gas.
Uh, interesting.
Hmm. So Scotty, their, their restaurant would be no more, but.
Yeah.
Well past its lifetime.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it is.
It'd still be very nice to have a, like a nice little dinner house there.
Yeah, yeah, there were a lot of people that really, that, you know, I know like Juan had dreams of maybe moving out there. And there were a couple of other people that wanted to see a burger joint there. It's, it'll be sad to see it go. But it's a, you know, that, the property owner has, has a vision and that's their, they're, they're working within the, you know, the processes of the city to do what they want with their building.
How far are we from having enough uh, of that type of business to sustain somebody on a full-time basis?
Uh, it it's hard to say. We've been toying with that idea uh, with all of our, with our planning, with our engineering and with the building inspector. Uh, we, we met with some different people that could possibly provide all of that. Uh, it it could be done. But we, we couldn't do it with just uh, just what we would be providing like a contract like for, like what we paid for Ben. But it's, it is, that, that is the direction we'd like to go. We just, we can't do it right now. And we need somebody to continue these services.
The reason that I ask is because uh, there was a time that we were getting enough permits in so that we did have a full-time person. I'm not sure exactly how, what happened. Uh, but, but we did at one time have a full-time person.
Yeah.
It was sustained by the fees.
But he was also the city planner too.
Yeah, he was, and that's what happened. It, it, it expanded out further than we expected it to. Uh, if we go in that direction again, I would advise highly that we do not allow it to expand like that again.
Yeah, if if we, if you lump in planning services, uh, engineering services, uh, building inspector services, we spend, you know, and some of it's through grant money. And that's where it gets, it gets tough because this person in this position is also going for these grants. But we spent about 227,000 last year in all those services together. That's not all out of, you know, the general fund. You know, like our, our engineering services, where I want to say around 160,000 last year. And some of that is like, you know, the, the different grants that we bring in, they get money off of those things. So, I mean, it, it, it certainly could be done, but then there's different levels of service, like the, the, you know, we talk about having a permit technician. We, we do have money in the budget to hire an additional public works employee. Uh, we are crafting a, a new job description so that we're not, we're, we're considering not hiring just a uh, a maintenance worker. We're thinking we should hire somebody that has some experience in the building trade that could work as a permit technician. So that, you know, like when somebody needs a roof permit, this person has, you know, the, 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 the levels of certification are permit tech, uh, building inspector, plan review, and then like PhD in engineering. Uh, the permit technician is what we can have in-house and can retain a lot of those permit fees, like, like, like John is saying. We just have to get somebody that is at that level. We, and I have talked to this, to LG Nelson about doing that. And he has said, okay, well, I'll be your building inspector. And if you do hire a permit tech, I will help train them. I will come down. I'll, you know, he, all he's got to do is, hey, this is what you look for on a roof uh, inspection, siding inspection, window inspection. And a lot of those initial low-level remodel inspections, we would be doing in-house and retaining the permit fees. And then we could train that person from there. But there's not, I don't think, going to be a, a point where when somebody wants to do something like out at the Ag Park and put in a big, you know, large commercial structure with, you know, steel beams and, you know, engineering reviews that we're going to have somebody in-house that's going to stamp that. There's, I think there's always, we would be wise to always have somebody on retainer to do those larger, more complex things. So the, the.
All I'm suggesting is that uh, we find a way that when we have the permit fees that uh, we're putting them in a separate account so that we can pay for those kind of services instead of wondering where they're coming from. For example, real estate excise taxes, one-time fee, building inspections are just one-time fee, all of that type of stuff. If we start doing that now, we can build towards that. And as those build, as those other stuff starts to come in, we'll have the funds already there and established so that we can pull from that instead of having to worry about where it's coming from, uh, where the funds are coming from to take care of that type of stuff.
Okay. Any further comments or discussion? Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Um, I just had a quick question. So why is it that we don't have LNI come in?
LNI does inspections for like electrical. So like, so if you're in any electrical that is done in a building, LNI does the inspections. When it's buildings, when it's like, you know, the actual construction, the plumbing, uh, you know, insulation, all those things, the city has the responsibility of doing those things.
And don't we have to pay LNI anyway? Isn't there a fee involved in them inspecting anything?
The, the, the building owner, when you're building your own building uh, or you're doing, you know, and Rachel's familiar with this because she probably hears about LNI inspections because her husband's an electrician. Uh, so that's what you would hear a lot of, but when you're building your building, you've got, you have the city come in and do inspections at different phases, you know, that the foundation gets poured. They come in and they make sure that the seismic strapping is done correctly. Then you get your frame put in and they come in and they make sure that the spacing is right and the, the correct uh, lumber is used for, you know, whatever type of windy conditions you've got to consider. And then the, and then this, then the siding goes on. And then the, the, the insulation goes in, the plumbing goes in. We're responsible for all those things. The one thing that we're not responsible, as I understand it, is the electrical. The electrical is done by LNI in Washington State. And then, and that is paid for by whoever's building the building. Just like they pay for us to come and do their inspection. Does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Good question. All right, is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. This is kind of another uh, housekeeping thing. Uh, so if you look at our, I thought I had a budget up here somewhere. If you look at our city budget, uh, we have uh, built-in stipends for different departments. Uh, in the police department, we have stipends for sergeant, stipends for FTO, start stipends for uh, firearms instructors, defensive tactics folks. In public works, we have stipends for a supervisor. Uh, if somebody is a uh, a wastewater uh, treatment plant operator, which we don't have one right now. Nobody's certified at that, so we're not paying that out. And then we put in three stipends for people to be cross-connection certified. Uh, with the, the idea of uh, well, us providing that service. We currently, Troy is the only one that is cross-connection certified. And he, he doesn't get stipened because he's salary. Uh, so, and we're not out providing that service. What we are doing is we have a water distribution system. And we have a, an individual who has done an exceptional job uh, becoming certified as a Water Distribution Manager One, and then recently as a Water Distribution Manager Two. And they have gone above and beyond to get that certification. And not only is that service now being provided better within the city, we recently signed an inter-local agreement to go to BuCota and provide that service to the city of BuCota. And we are charging the city of BuCota for that. Uh, I would like to see us reallocate the stipend, change the stipend from three cross-connection certifications to we will be paying a stipend for a Water Distribution Manager One level, you get 100 bucks. Water Distribution Manager Two level, you get 200 bucks. I'm not asking for more money. I'm asking to redistribute the money and change the stipend program in public works as I described it.
So moved.
Does that make sense?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay.
Hmm.
It has been moved and seconded to authorize the mayor to uh, to alter the Public Works Stipend Program to award uh, stipends to uh, water distribution managers, a, a water distribution manager. Uh, so then we'll have, if somebody's certified as in sewer, they get a stipend. Somebody certified in water, they get a stipend. And, and as I described, is there any discussion? Awesome. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Uh, that brings us to music festival.
Before that, Mr. Mayor, let me, let me add on uh, because I didn't want to bring it up under discussion because it was a standalone issue. Uh, do we have funds for training? Uh, training one, one time came up and it was a giant argument over who pays for somebody's training. Uh, my, my issue was that if it's somebody that's looking just to get training for something, uh, then it's, it's going to be on them. But if it's something that's going to benefit the city uh, and is part of a jo, of a job that they're, that they need to be able to step up to, then the city should pay for that. Do we have a budget for, for uh, training for those positions?
Most, most, all of our departments have a training budget, including uh, city council. So you guys have a training budget. The executive office has a training budget. Police Department has a training budget. Public Works has a training budget. Uh, City Hall has a training budget. Uh, they're all at different levels based on what the, the directors in those departments have said that their needs are for the next year. Uh, and it's, it is the determination of the directors what the needs are of those departments. But uh, yes, if we are going to send somebody to training, like, like if we want somebody to become a field training officer in the police department, we're saying, we want that position filled. Uh, we are going to pay you to go and get that training. If uh, you know, if we had a, an individual, maybe a public works or police or whatever that said they want to go and get a certain certification, and maybe we hadn't identified that as a need, uh, then, you know, they might go pay for that on their own. Is that, is that kind of what you're saying?
Yeah.
But if, if we, if the city says, we want something, we need something, uh, and we're, we're, we're going to pay for it.
Yeah.
And, and then, and then it's a different issue whether or not there's a stipend attached to it.
Yeah, that's like, that's a totally separate issue.
Yep.
Uh, and that's why I didn't want to bring it up uh, during the last conversation.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Music festival. So uh, we have, we have an individual, Mr. Mr. Nick Resitak, Resitak before us, uh, who is, he is wanting to uh, talk to the city council and the administration about hosting a music festival in the city of Tenino. We wanted to pull this out from the rest of the event requests because this one is a bigger request. Uh, there are more unknowns. Uh, we, we do recognize that we have a, a good history of hosting music festivals here and we love them and we want to do it again. But we don't know, we don't know. And so, you know, the, the hard, the hard time that I have, you know, just throwing it out there is uh, over committing to you. And like, I want you to know the risks because, you know, just like Oregon Trail Days, we're going to have a discussion next week about it. Uh, is, you know, they get real nervous about starting to pay for things upfront, starting to book things, not knowing what the landscape is going to be like. But with no further ado, I'll, I'll, I'll uh, turn the mic over to Mr. Resitak.
Hey, how's it going, everyone? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Uh, like the mayor said, uh, my name's Nick Resitak. Um, I'm the wrestling coach for the middle school and high school females team. Um, and then also I graduated from Tenino in 2009. And uh, I grew up in BuCota, um, but obviously that Tenino community as well. Um, I've been wanting to, I'll put this event on for a little while, ever since I found out Adam Craig was no longer going to do it. Um, I know this year, uh, obviously this whole thing would be pending COVID. I of course understand that. Um, but I have, I have already filed and got approved for a 501(c)(3). Uh, I had an attorney do all that paperwork for me. Um, then I've also been in contact with uh, Kristi Burke, um, who of course ran the Adam Craig Foundation and that Four Square Music Festival. And she is more than willing to help with uh, anything that she can to um, to help guide me down that path to make sure this is uh, successful. Uh, my charity is almost exactly what the Adam Craig Foundation was. It uh, specifically will be to hold an event like this um, to help raise funds for the youth and different sports organizations within specifically and only uh, the Tenino community. Um, outside of that, um, I've done quite a bit of research and got uh, quite a bit of quotes. I have also, um, I got a, an opening band tentatively scheduled, of course. Um, so they, they know that this isn't approved yet. And of course, they know that COVID is a huge factor in this. And then I also do have an opening act as well as that headlining act. Um, I've got quotes from Honey Bucket, um, a stage company, which they also do sound engineering, um, fencing company, um, a whole laundry list of stuff. Um, just to try to be as ready as I can if Co, uh, COVID does decide to work with us.
What is your ask?
What is that, sir?
What is your ask?
My ask?
Yeah, or is this just a, a introduction to who you are and what you're looking to do?
Oh, yeah, I'm just looking for, um, I guess, the approval to do this. Um, um, it would be if it, if it could happen this year.
So that, you know, we haven't.
What's that?
Our event, our event forums are pretty much handled administratively. Uh, you know, so we, you know, we process those internally. What, what I, you know, wanted to introduce was you to the council and open up uh, the idea for uh, debate or, you know, if there's any concerns that council has, or if there's any advice that anyone has for Nick. Uh, I, I, I love the idea. I want him to be successful. I, you know, I would be very worried and scared about dropping uh, in, you know, investing in something that, you know, may not happen, but you know, I want us to be in as supportive as possible, you know, without with also, also being realistic. So there, there's not a specific ask. This is more an initial introduction and an opportunity for the council to, you know, hear from Nick and ask him questions and him ask questions of the city in the public.
So who are the bands and where are they from? And what kind of music do they?
Jason, Jason first.
So who are the bands? Where are they from? And what, what kind of music do they play? So who are the bands? Where are they from? And what, what kind of music do they play?
Okay. So our head, our headliner band, uh, they're the Olson Brothers. They're out of Olympia, Washington. Um, they're a country band, um, Luke and Isaac Olson. They, they, they are played on the radio a little bit here, especially out in Aberdeen. I forget the name of that radio station. Um, and then our opening act, the Olson Band, they're also are in the works of trying to get another opener for them. And then the other one is a kid named Kyle Murdoch. He's from Roy, Washington. Uh, he plays, it's kind of like soul music, but with a country vibe to it. Um, so they're both local artists. Um, the Olson Band, of course, is, is quite a bit bigger though.
Okay. Uh, council member Godovac, you had a question?
Well, I just wanted to know what our chief thinks of this and if she thinks that there would be any problems with having an event this size.
I don't believe so. Um, I believe that we, um, we have enough officers and enough reserve officers to, um, staff an event and depending on, depending on the size, we'd have to look at it. Obviously we might be able to bring on a few, um, temporary employees for, um, for security purposes.
Okay, thank you. I, I like the idea. I really do. And of course, if, if it's for charity and it is, that makes it all the better.
Yes, it a hundred percent is.
So the city has to authorize the use of the park. Uh, you know, the things that we would want, you know, like there's these, you know, rollouts, these phases. And, you know, we don't have any authority over, you know, what those recommendations are. Uh, you know, our, our best, you know, our best move is to just follow the recommendations. Uh, what I would ask you is to, you know, do the additional research, possibly contact the county department of health. Uh, you know, and, and find out if they have any, uh, markers or any like guidance, you know, they say, they've let us know when restaurants are allowed to happen. Are they going to let us know when outdoor events, music festivals? You know, is there, is there a marker they're looking for, uh, to say when, when those things are recommended or not?
Maybe George Sharp can answer something along those lines. Maybe he's heard something by now.
George is in tune with the event, uh, world. George, are you there?
Yeah, Mayor. I'm on the Washington Festival Events Board of Directors and we're doing this right now. We're working with the governor's office with John Snyder on what's going to be being rolled out. Right now you can have 200, up to 200 people at an event outdoor. And so I think by July it's probably going to be larger than that. I know the people in the gorge are planning to put on some events later this year as well. So we probably should know in a week or two what they think's going to happen by July. I know Capital Lake Fair right now is planning to run unless they're told otherwise. The Olympia Harbor Days is also planning to run unless they're told otherwise, but they're thinking, both organizations are thinking that they're going to be able to put their events on.
Okay, Nick, George Sharp is a good person to, uh, to have contact with or like look for guidance from. Uh, he's
I was just getting ready, ready to offer that to you Nicholas to meet up with you. Yeah. So I was just getting ready to offer you Nicholas to meet up with you and to talk about it. I created the Tom Water Artisan Brew Festival, National Linal Festival, a lot of, a lot of different festivals I've been involved with. So, and part of the Capital Lake Fair Board of Directors for many years. So look forward to working with you.
Okay. Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Uh, Nick, I had a question. So, um, depending on what happens with COVID, are you planning on also serving alcohol and, um, the vending as well?
Uh, alcohol, yes. Um, of course I have already looked into, um, getting a liquor license from the state of Washington, the, um, the, um, special event liquor license, um, and the guidelines that go along with that. Uh, for food vending, uh, I'm not a hundred percent sure what I'm going to do. I have reached out to, um, the Cattlemen in Yelm, uh, cause I know they do have like a catering type truck to see if they would be interested in serving hamburgers and, uh, simple food like that. Um, but the charities will not actually be doing the food, I guess.
Well, so one idea would be if you would, uh, reach out to the PTA because I know they did that for, um, the Adam Craig Festival. The PTA comes in and that as well also benefits the schools. Cause, um, I don't know for sure what the whole agreement was, but I know that partial of it did help fund the schools. So maybe just check with the PTA. Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be a great idea. Cause I mean, all, all this is about is trying to get, um, the schools and our youth programs as much money, additional money that they can.
And Nicholas, you said that Kristy Burke was willing to help you with organizing this?
Yes, she is. She is actually, I, like, long story short, I contacted Chris Hallett, uh, cause I know him reasonably well. Um, and he told me, reach out to Kristy. So I reached out to Kristy and she's the one who's guided me, uh, to, she was guiding me on how to do this, um, alone, which is much but I
She knows it all.
Yes, she does. But for my sake and sanity, I went with just hiring an attorney to help me. Um, just a, a little bit easier. So.
Yeah. No, great.
Awesome. And then I don't really have a question. I just think this is a great opportunity and the charity it's going to is, you, you can't beat that. So just good luck in the future and I'm excited to see the developments.
Awesome. All right. Anything further for Nick?
Yeah. Good luck, Nick. I hope, uh, hope this pulls off for you and everything goes well for you.
We're all looking forward to it.
Yes, thank you all.
Thank you for stepping up. We appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. That brings us to intergovernmental agreement with Capcom. Um, we had a presentation from Mr. Flueeling earlier, the director. Uh, and we also voiced our, uh, you know, our, our gripes. And I, I think he heard us and we can continue working on that. Uh, with that being said, is there any discussion or is there a motion? Actually, we need a motion.
To approve.
Okay. We have a motion, a second to approve the IGA as presented, uh, from Capcom. Is there any discussion?
Again, this is basically housekeeping. They've had to clean up some of the language in there. Uh, some of the stuff got eliminated that wasn't pertinent anymore. And that's what we're voting on tonight. It's just, uh, a revised cleaner, uh, addition of the agreement between the, the inter, it's an intergovernmental agreement.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Uh, that brings us to Farmer's Market and Cascade or Evergreen Bicycle Club. Do we have a motion to, uh, waive the event fees for said organizations?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes. They will appreciate that. Uh, that brings us to reports. EDC, their board meetings tomorrow. Uh, George, do you have anything from the EDC?
We, we wanted to update you on where we're at with the economic development chapter of the comprehensive plan from the EDC standpoint, because we're helping write that. We met with the planning commission last month and gave them a proposed survey. There will be a community survey. The next step is we wanted to share that with you. I do have it up and I could show you briefly, but we're going to send that to you for, like for your next council meeting to give us feedback on it.
Would you like to be on, uh, like 10 minutes on the work session or something at the next meeting?
Yeah. Yeah, at the next meeting. That would be great.
Sounds excellent.
And then I also noticed that the chamber was not on the agenda today. Normally we are to give a report.
If that's true, it was just an oversight. So, uh, go ahead, give a chamber report.
Am I able to share the screen?
Uh, if you're given the authorization, I think. Sharper.
Are you seeing anything on the screen on your side?
Negative.
Okay. Well, I don't see it coming up. So what I just shared with you is that the chamber is getting ready to launch the next phase, what we're calling the next phase of the Tenino Wooden Money. Screen still trying to share. I'll say, anyway, we're going to do a Tenino Wooden Money, what we call it now that the COVID money that the city did is finished up and done. The chamber has proposed to do what's calling the Small Business COVID 19, 20, 21 Small Business Recovery Program. And it's going to be where people can bring a $20 cash bill, residents and visitors to Tenino representatives. One will be the Sandstone Cafe. And they will be given a $21 bill. So they're actually gaining a dollar on that. And the money is going to be printed by the People Museum and South Thurston Historical Society. And we have the designs. That's what I was hoping to share you tonight, but I'll put those in and we'll send it off to you. We're going to launch this on March 19th. March 19th is also going to be launched, the Tenino Arts Spring Market. That'll be held at the Kodiak Room, which is formerly the Vault. And we'll have approximately 30 artisans signed up to be there. It'll be a week long. So it'll be Friday, Saturday and Sunday there. And the merchants then will be able to turn the $21 bill back to the chamber. The chamber will write them a check. Well, that's the gist of how that program's going to work.
Awesome.
On the backside of it, it's signed by the mayor, by the chamber president and by Lauren Ackerman, the president and printer of the money.
Awesome. Uh, VCB, I'm assuming they have no report. Uh, Fire District 12.
No report really. Just go through normal housekeeping right now, changing, changing of officers, that type of stuff.
Okay. Museum.
No report.
Tenino Community Service Center. I do not see them present. Finance Committee will meet. Planning Commission. Okay. Troy is not present tonight. City Planner, Building Official. Uh, talked to the city planner for a bit today. Uh, he is working on the Habitat Conservation Plan. Uh, issue that he's dealing with in that is there is a 25% match, uh, which turns out to be like $90,000 over three years. However, it can be an in-kind match. So he is putting, he's penciling together a budget, uh, that we would have that includes his service. Uh, about 20 hours a month of the city clerk's service. And, and then, uh, when we have stakeholder meetings, when say the community's development director from the county comes and other people come, we can count their involvement as in-kind service. So he feels that, uh, he can, he can pencil out that 30,000 a year over three years uh, through the in-kind services that we'll already be providing. And we'll be able to fund that Habitat Conservation Plan. Um, other things that he is dealing with. Uh, there is the Lemon Hill Development Pros- Prospect that is coming, that is coming quickly at us. Uh, there were some developers that are, uh, very large and very, uh, full steam ahead that are looking at environmental studies and some of the topography on the hill. Uh, I don't know how many houses, but there it is a, it is, it is looking more likely that there will be some development in that area in Tenino. Clerk Treasurer, Mr. Scott Garrison.
I don't really have anything to add tonight, uh, but I'll answer any questions if anybody has anything.
Got money?
Uh, it's going out fast. We'll have to take a look at that. But this time of year you pay the annual stuff. So that's why it's going out fast.
Okay. Police Chief.
Well, we have, um, two new officers starting, uh, at the end of this week. Um, many of you might know Drew Johnson, who's worked, uh, for us for a couple of years as a reserve officer. He's going to be starting provisionally, uh, for a six month term on Saturday and I'm going to be field training with him. And, uh, our new full-time officer, Aaron Lee is going to be starting on Monday. And he's going to be field training with, uh, with Sergeant Sharp. So we'll bring them around to, uh, meet everybody.
Okay. Anything else? Any questions for the chief? All right. Uh, mayor's report. Uh, been busy. Uh, have the EDC meeting tomorrow. Uh, spent some time in the office today, meeting with, uh, Public Works Director. I owe the chief a meeting and, uh, we're just, we're just plugging along. So we're staying busy. Public comment period number two. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to provide public comment, this is your second opportunity. Uh, please do so by turning on your microphone, stating your name and address. You'll be given three minutes. Hearing none. Going once, going twice. That brings us to announcements. Mr. Callahan.
Okay, uh, just watching what happens with, uh, with the fairs that are, that are possibly going to happen. If they do start to happen, uh, more than likely I'm going to come to you guys to ask for use of the park so that we can hold the, uh, first responders potluck barbecue there this year.
Thank you, sir. We look forward to that. Any other announcements? I posted it on Facebook, but I was, I was contacted by, uh, a, what is it? Uh, I can't even say it. Let me pull it up.
Korean organization.
Yeah. Well, like the Korean government in, uh, the Gyeonggi Province, uh, which is the largest local autonomy in the Republic of Korea, who state they have been inspired by our local currency program and, uh, are working on a basic income fair that is held like the, the world basic income fair that is held for the last three years. And they have invited, uh, your mayor to provide an electronic address because they state that Tenino has inspired them to, uh, work towards, uh, providing a basic income for the residents, which is, it's just pretty interesting. I don't think we could have ever seen this one coming. Uh, but that's going on. So that is my announcement. Is there anyone else?
Um, it's not really an announcement, just more of a question. Hey, George, is it okay if I share your email with, uh, Mr. Resitak?
All right.
That'd be great. Yes.
Okay. All right. So the last announcement is Tenino is huge in South Korea right now. That will probably never be said again.
And the Mr. Smith, and the Smithsonian too. So there you go.
Smithsonian, yeah. All right.
Better than North Korea.
Yep. Rodman has North Korea. Tenino has South Korea. So, all right. Any further announcements? Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Addadable motion.
Good night, bubble heads.